1:30, I'll call the meeting to order. First item of business is approval of the agenda. Counselor Ationi.
Thank you, Warden. Through you, moved by myself, second by Counselor Schaefer. Resolved that the agenda be approved?
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest and the general nature thereof? Not seeing any? No minutes to adopt, no public meetings, delegations' presentations and consideration thereof? And at this point, I'll turn it over to Acting Director Rebecca Smith and let you take it from here as you want to do it.
Thank you, Warden. And counsel, I know it's a bit of a long day, but kind of an important one this afternoon. Really trying to kind of have an open discussion about homelessness and what you're kind of experiencing in your community. And we do have SHS, who's the consultant working on the homelessness response strategy, here with us today. Adrian, and I know they'll introduce themselves a little bit more too, but Adrian, Christine and Nandita. And they'll kind of walk you through where we are in this process. We have kind of been working on this for quite some time. A very large of this, very big component of this project has been consultation with our community partners because, as we all know, it's just not the county working in this space. This is really supposed to be a community-driven plan. So I will hand it over to Adrian, but maybe the thing I always say, maybe if we want to save questions for the end of the presentation and again, looking for your honest feedback. I don't think we've had an open conversation about this with everyone present, so really feel free to share what you need to during the question and comment period. And we will ensure that does get incorporated into the plan in some way. So I'll hand it over to Adrian. Thanks.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having us. So I'm Adrian from SHS. As Rebecca mentioned, Nandita and Christine are also here from our team. Just a quick little background on us. So we're an affordable housing and homelessness firm. We work all across Canada. A lot of our work happens to be in Ontario because we are based in Ontario. And we work in the realms of housing policy, so we actually have done some of your housing strategy in the past. We have a team that's totally dedicated to affordable housing development, working with nonprofits on all community housing development across Ontario and across Canada. And we also have a team that works on housing and homelessness innovation projects. So you'll see today that we're going to walk you through, as Rebecca mentioned, the process that we've been going through so far. We'll spend about, you know, 20 to 30 minutes on the talking portion from my end and then leave quite a bit of space for you to weigh in and, as Rebecca said, would love to get some of your thoughts on what you're actually seeing happening in your community. We are, I'll show you in a second on our little timeline here, but we are at a point where we have some pieces to show you, but there's still a lot more work to be done. So we are glad to be able to come talk to you at this moment in time because there's still actually quite a bit of time to influence what actually goes into the strategy. So we're also seeing this as a great kind of input moment so that you can actually influence at the first draft what is going into this strategy. So I'm just going to actually move this little window that we have here. So we're going to start with a little introduction. I'll run you through the agenda and what we'll cover. You are going to see in these slides that we've shared and uploaded, there's a lot of text. I'm not going to read through everything. It was more for the purposes of sharing with you, you know, everything that we've got so far, so that if you want to come back and ask us questions about the details, we can do that. But I am acknowledging that what you're going to see on the screen is quite a hefty amount of text. And that's intentional so that you can have all the information that we've got so far. So in terms of today's agenda, just going to work on the click here if I can get it going. We will share, as I mentioned, a little overview of the process, some of the key findings that we're hearing so far from the community and, you know, how we've actually built in the community into that process. We are actually glad to have already come, built a first draft of the framework of the strategy. And that's really what we wanted to bring to you today to get a little bit of a gut check now, you know, does this make sense? Is there anything missing? Because then from there, we're really going to build out that detailed strategy and implementation plan. And then, of course, as I mentioned, we'll have, you know, a good chunk of time for discussion at the end. So, you know, what is the purpose of today? I think I covered some of this already. You know, we're bringing you up to speed on what we've done today. We're sharing some of what we've learned already in our engagements. And then we're hoping to validate some of that strategic framework that has already been developed. And of course, you might have questions that you might raise that hopefully one of the many of us in the rest of the team is here too, from the county, will be able to answer. So we'll start with a bit of an overview of the process, you know, what have we done so far? How did we get to where we are today? I think the interesting part about this initiative, you'll see as we go through, is that the methodology has been quite robust in terms of involving the community in the process. And so that's, I think, the unique spin that we're taking here on this homelessness response strategy. So of course, as you know, this strategy is building on your housing and homelessness plan. So this was one of the directions that came out of your housing and homelessness plan. This is all about reducing homelessness. This is all about preventing homelessness, making sure that everyone has a home that they can afford and that's a safe and adequate and suitable place to live. So this plan is going to kind of cascade up into this larger strategy that you have. So it's kind of nice that you have this direct line between these two plans that you're creating. So what are some of the objectives of this project? So we started by taking a look at reviewing the homelessness system that you have so far across the county. What are some of the gaps? What are some of the things that are working well? Where might there be things like, you know, duplication? We wanted to make sure that there was meaningful community engagement in this process and feedback about the system. And this includes all the way coming down to people with lived experience, so I'll explain that a little bit more shortly. And then, of course, this notion of creating a strategy that's actually taking a whole of community and whole of system approach. So actually being able to speak with folks from those with lived experience, the people who are working on the front lines, management level, and then senior leadership. You'll see that we've included kind of participation across the entire spectrum and across the county from representation of different municipalities. This slide is just showing you kind of the governance of the project, so who's involved. So of course, as Rebecca mentioned, you've retained us at SHS Consulting to support with this work. We have a large group of folks on the county team as well who have been part of the day-to-day project team. We also had assembled a community advisory committee. So they've been a group that we met with on a quarterly basis to give us strategic advice and guidance over the course of the project. They are folks who are working currently in the housing and homelessness sector in Oxford County, some of them who are, you know, overseeing frontline staff, some of them who are working in the supportive housing space. So we're using them as a bit of a sounding board to make sure that we're on the right track as we go. They were all folks who had been brought together by invitation to participate in this advisory committee. And then lastly, we brought together what we're calling like a community design team. This was approximately 40 to 50 people, I think somewhere right in the middle, people from across the county. So that's actually quite an impressively large group of people who were interested in participating in this work, again, by invitation. They are folks who are representing, as I was saying, all the way from people with lived experience, so people who might be actually today currently experiencing homelessness, frontline staff, people who kind of at the management supervisory level of frontline, and then all the way up to senior leadership. Again, all municipalities, covered, different domains of the homelessness-serving sector covered, funding agencies like the United Way. So we had assembled quite a unique group of folks and they participated in two full-day events where they came together and helped us build the components of this strategy. And I'll explain that piece in a second, but the convening of this community design team certainly is a unique approach that I don't think we've seen groups and governments take up too often because it is quite a participatory approach. So that's a unique feature of this project. Overall, you know, what did we build up into our methodology here? So of course, we started with data analysis in terms of, you know, looking at what you're doing today, desk research on best practices from other communities, that's underway right now, quantitative research, so looking at your by-name list, I'll get to that in a second, sharing some of the outcomes there. And then, of course, the qualitative research that we're doing, interviewing folks from your community, and then these co-design workshops that I was speaking of where we came together for two full days to actually start to build the plan together. You'll see here on this slide, you know, a little note about using a systems lens. So the idea here is that, you know, the people who are involved in the system should actually be part of the solution and part of identifying what are actually the problems that we're concerned with solving and what are the solutions that might help us get there. So that's part of the approach that we use and that's helping us have quite a robust approach to making sure that different perspectives are covered and that also, you know, as I'm sure all of you know, with a lot of social services and big social issues, they're all connected to other problems, right? So we said, we need to make sure that we're reaching a wide enough group that we can totally understand all the pieces of the puzzle here and what really might be going on and impacting people who might be experiencing homelessness. So we kind of keep that in our minds through this work is how do we make sure that the whole system is present here and understood? So I'll just tell you quickly about, you know, our timelines. Of course, we started in May. We started in what we call the discovery stage. This is what, where we started with our investigation of, you know, what's the current state? What's happening today? What are some of the most common journeys that we're seeing in terms of people's experiences of homelessness? So what are the, you know, situations that they might find themselves in? What kind of services might they go to first? Where might they end up? What are some of the biggest challenges that they experience when either accessing services or trying to find services? And through this work of the current state, we hosted a large survey of community agencies across the county to understand, you know, what might be going on today? What are some of the challenges you're experiencing? We had interviews with individuals experiencing homelessness. So a few of our team members actually came out and visited some of your shelters and some of the encampments and actually had one-on-one conversations with folks directly kind of in their communities and where they're at. And then, of course, as I was mentioning earlier, this is all complemented with secondary research, so looking at the policy context, looking at what are your plans already kind of implementing and recommending. And then this is where we met for the first time with our advisory committee to get their input on the, our methodology. Moving into kind of our next stage here, we said, okay, so if we understand what's going on today, now let's think about, okay, what are our opportunities for the future? What are some of the visions that the community would actually like to see? What does success look like? If we're all kind of designing towards a big goal, what should that goal be? What does that vision for the future look like? And so that's where we started with our first community engagement event. And we actually asked folks to help us design that ideal future state so that we could then work backwards to how do we actually get there? So that was kind of the big focus of this middle section in thinking about, you know, what could that future look like in Oxford County? And then lastly, and this is the stage that we're in right now, it's actually getting to, okay, so if we know where we are today, we know where we want to get to in the future, how do we actually get to that future state? And so almost like reverse engineering, how do we get to that future? So this is where we think about the recommendations. So now what should actually go into this plan? And so we had the opportunity to host a second all-day event with that 45-person group where we said, okay, you told us where you want to get to, you told us what all the issues are today. Now how can we actually take some meaningful steps to get to that, to those solutions? And so that's where we are today. And so everything you're seeing today is actually coming directly from the community. So we haven't yet infused our lens and our, you know, all the secondary research and other pieces of data. We wanted to actually show you where the community landed because it's kind of an interesting place to just see without all of our coloring, what are the people in your community who are working in this space every day and maybe who are super close to people experiencing homelessness? What are they saying and thinking and feeling and wanting from a plan? So we'll cover quickly what are the key findings so far. This is where we get into a lot more text, which I'm going to, I might not go through every single word. Again, this is just to show you kind of where we're at and give you a good sense of some of the detail. Again, if you want to come back and ask questions about this, I can always come back to some of these pieces. So what we'll talk about is the experiences in the system that we've based a lot of our work on, some of the key insights that are coming out of your by-name list, and some of the core challenges that people have expressed related to each of these experiences of homelessness. So this slide is just going to show you kind of, these are the three big buckets of experiences that we heard. So we, as I mentioned, you know, we hosted this survey, we went out and spoke with people in the community. And this is after our first big all-day event together. We came up with these three thematic areas of the types of experiences that people are having when in, whether they're already experiencing homelessness or they might be at risk of homelessness or maybe they're trying to move out into a more permanent situation. One little caveat, and I will go through these three, is this is not really meant to be like a linear experience. Some people might be experiencing different kind of pieces of the puzzle here, so not to read this as linear, but these are just three thematic areas. So the first thematic area is all around preventing homelessness. So this is, think about people who might, I've never experienced homelessness before. I might have otherwise kind of been living a life that this is not something that would have ever crossed my mind, but sometimes there's something in life that changes and that might have me end up in a situation where I might be at risk of losing my home. So that's kind of this whole thematic area about what are the actual experiences of, why does someone actually experience homelessness? What is that thing that kind of maybe triggers that precarity of housing? The second thematic area is all about managing experiences of homelessness. So if, you know, if we can't totally prevent it, someone now has an experience of homelessness, how are we actually understanding what it's like to experience homelessness in Oxford County? Do I know where to go? Do I know who to call? Are there places available to help me? Do those services actually speak to each other or are they all disconnected? So we wanted to say, okay, well, what happens if I do experience homelessness? What does that look like? And then the third thematic area is all about accessing housing and services. So maybe now I've had, I've had an experience of homelessness and I'm trying to kind of work my way out and find this experience of, you know, maybe I would like to access, you know, mental health supports or maybe I would access other supports to, for daily living or maybe a rent subsidy to keep my home. And then on the flip side, maybe I'm looking for specific housing support. So maybe I'm looking for transitional housing or permanent supportive housing. What does that actually look like to be able to find those, that housing and services? So these are the three kind of thematic areas that we investigated. Just going to click here. The other piece of the puzzle that was really important for us to look at, and this is a snapshot just super quick of what your by-name list looks right now. So your by-name list is a list of, a real-time list actually of individuals experiencing homelessness. It's depicting the inflows and outflows. So who is becoming homeless or having a new occurrence of homelessness and then who is actually being housed? So if this list is well-maintained, it's actually, when we say in real time, it means it's being updated continuously. So you always have almost like this dashboard of information to be able to understand what's the current state of affairs. So this is seen as kind of a really integral tool to be, being able to really understand what's going on in your community. So you do have one of these lists, which is great. So we were able to take a peek at it and see kind of what is the current state of affairs based on this list. Of course, the list is only as good as it's updated, right? So the more effectively it is actually managed, the better information you have here. When we took a look at it in, and did this little analysis in July, there were 116 people who were on this list. And you'll see that the list is also going to tell you, you know, how many people have been recently housed? How many, what is the average number of days that someone might experience homelessness? You know, what proportion of the group might be chronically homeless, so homeless for a long time? What proportion might have a mental illness, a substance use, those who might have experienced domestic violence, folks who might be indigenous people or youth? So you can break it down by all these different demographic criteria, which really helps you get a sense of what kinds of services do we actually need to support exits from homelessness. It also gives you some information about, you know, how many nights on average are people spending in a shelter? So that's what this by-name list is telling us. So we use this as a starting point for kind of understanding, you know, what's going on today in Oxford County. I'm not going to read through all of these slides, but what you're going to see on the next three slides is our reporting of each of these three thematic areas. So under the domain, for example, of preventing homelessness, what were some of the core challenges that we were hearing from people in your community? So for example, some of the key challenges here were, of course, you know, I don't think this is going to be totally, you know, breaking news, but rising cost of living, of course, is leading to people living maybe unaffordably. So they might be making decisions about what I'm spending my money on. I might now not be able to afford food because everything's going to rent. So there's quite a few trade-offs that people are having to make in order to make ends meet. So they might be kind of, you know, this is the scenario where I might be one paycheck away, right, from not being able to afford my rent. Access to services maybe was difficult for folks, so things like, you know, mental health supports, employment, financial support. So think of these services as services that I haven't experienced homelessness yet, but I might need to access services in order to keep my home and remain stable and housed. And then lastly, protection for renters was named as an important piece too. So being able to prevent maybe unfair evictions, rent increases that might have been rapid, and other threats to stable housing. In this category, a lot of what we are hearing too is that, you know, there are folks who might, because of the rising cost of housing, they might be living in circumstances where they're actually not living in secure tenure. And what that means is they actually might not have a lease. So I might be living in a room in a house where I'm paying the homeowner to live in this room, but I actually might not be, I might not be supported by the landlord and tenant board and the Residential Tenancies Act because I don't have an official lease. So people who are living in these kind of non-traditional housing circumstances, so the example that we heard the most was someone renting a room, for example, those are emerging to fill a gap, right? So there might be a lack of purpose-built rental available, so, you know, permanent rental housing. And so these are some of kind of these emerging solutions that are coming to be. And sometimes people enter into these circumstances without total knowledge of what they're signing up for, right? So they might not realize that they don't actually have the protections that other tenants might have traditionally if they had a formal lease. So those are some examples of some of the challenges related to preventing homelessness. We did also note that, you know, according to your needs assessment as of 2021, 1 in 8 renters were experiencing core housing need. So that's a decent proportion. If you're in core housing need, it means that either you're living somewhere that's unaffordable, you're living somewhere that's not suitable, or you're living somewhere that's not adequate. So maybe it's in need of major repairs and you actually can't afford an alternative in your, in your community. So you don't have, you're not able to actually move on to a better situation. So that is the 1 in 8 renters in the county. If we think about managing experiences of homelessness, so what is it like if I've actually, let's say we weren't successful in preventing homelessness and now we have an experience of homelessness, what are some of the challenges? So, you know, of course stigma and discrimination came up a lot. So sometimes that limits someone's ability to access housing. Sometimes when I want to seek out a program or a service, sometimes there are requirements that are difficult to meet. So, you know, do I have an ID? Do I have the ability to show up somewhere at a very specific time when it's open? Things like that. Is there a waitlist that I now have to deal with and manage and someone has to contact me when it's my turn on a waitlist, but maybe I'm, it's not easy to contact me? There was also this notion that like maybe there isn't deep coordination between some of these services. So I might have to give my information to multiple groups and maybe that information is not being shared. So we said, you know, how might we change kind of how that system works? You'll see in the middle column here, there were some other really specific challenges that were coming up. And these are, these are interesting because these came right from being able to actually show up in the, you know, encampments and actually speak directly with folks. So things like storage, things like safety, not being able, not being able to access services that are all co-located. There's a few instances where services are located together such as employment or other types of supports where I can go to one place and access all of those services. That makes a huge difference for people. So we were also looking at, you know, what works really well, and that was an example of what was working really well. And then lastly, this idea of, you know, so, okay, now we want to actually access housing and services. We want to move on and we want to find a stable place to live. And so of course, the, you know, goes without saying, the lack of available units that are affordable in the community is of course the biggest barrier. And in terms of, you know, there may be sometimes there's no extra step after, or no next step after I've accessed services. So let's say I've lived in transitional housing, so that's a temporary supportive environment. I might have lived there for a year. My caseworker, the person I'm working with and living in transitional housing, might actually have nowhere next to refer me to. They might say, well, your time is up here, but I actually have nowhere, no apartment to send you to, or I have no mental health support worker to send you to. And so we heard quite a few stories where there's almost this drop-off point. And if you can think not just from the perspective of the person who's in that situation, of course, that's, you know, a terrible news. And then also we are hearing in these sessions, you know, from the staff perspective, you know, too, they have to deliver that news to someone. And for them, they're feeling like, you know, well, I couldn't really do my job well because I'm kind of constrained here. So those were some of the stories that we were hearing about being able to actually access housing and services and what might be needed. So we took all this information about, you know, what are the challenges today? What are the experiences? And we said, okay, if we're going to use this as the basis for our strategy, what could that look like? And so what we did from here is we said, okay, we're building a strategy, but we want to make sure that we have some criteria that if we look back on our strategy, we could test all of the actions and tactics and, you know, action and steps that we put into this strategy and say, are they actually fulfilling what we think success looks like? And so these six principles came out of the conversations. Again, this came directly from the people who are working in this sector in the county who said, you know, our strategy needs to respond to these six principles. So these are really key for us to make sure that we're on the right track and that we're actually accomplishing what your community set us out to do. So I'll just go through the six really quickly. The first is fostering understanding and empathy for people experiencing homelessness among community members. Prioritizing dignity and self-determination of people experiencing homelessness. So are we giving people choice and the ability to have that agency to make choice in their lives? Are we designing for the long term and sustainable change that is actually informed by lived expertise? So we're thinking long-term in this strategy. We're ensuring consistency of service across the system. So it shouldn't matter which municipality I live in, I should be able to get the same service and experience. We should be promoting transparency, accountability and collaboration among service providers. So this was something that came directly from service providers about how can we work better together so that we're actually sharing information and we're all working towards the same goal? And then lastly, having a bias towards flexibility and enabling problem-solving to respond to individual needs. So we want to create programs and services that have, you know, a great structure and kind of guidelines, but they need to be flexible enough that I'm able to kind of find a way to solve problems for whoever comes to my door. And maybe that means partnering with another agency or maybe that means sharing information. So how do we actually infuse this notion of flexibility into everything we do? So these were the, these were the six criteria that we used as a starting point. And from there, I'm going to show you all the components of the framework that we have today. And then I think this is the last thing where I'll stop talking. And then I think this is the last thing where I'll stop talking. We started with your high-level vision. So by 2030, experiences of homelessness are brief, and people in Oxford can access seamless supports to find and keep their housing. So, you know, of course, the keep housing is also critical here, that we can actually maintain it and we don't have a recurrence of homelessness. From there, we've created four components of this strategy. So we have some foundational system elements, pillars, priorities, and goals. After this, we're going to get down to the actions and tactics. And that's where we get actually granular, what are the specific steps we're going to take? But we're not there yet, which is why we're glad to be speaking to you at this point in the process. So the foundational system elements, these are the components of the system that we say, you know, you're going to have all these other goals and actions and tactics, but these pieces are kind of laying the foundation for a really resilient and excellent system that's going to work really well. So think of these foundational system elements almost as like the behind-the-scenes. This is what the people working in the system are going to see, and they need this in order to do their job really well. So the first is streamlining service navigation. So creating seamless connections between services so that people have rapid access to the help they need. So this is the actual navigation in the behind-the-scenes of the services. So if I'm working in the mental health space, do I know what's going on at the food bank? And does the person at the food bank know what's going on at the housing help center? So that we're all actually working together. And then the second key foundational piece is building system capacity. So ensuring people working in the system have the capacity and resources they need to provide excellent customer service. So these are the two foundational pieces that people cared about. From there, we developed the three pillars. And again, you're going to see the same themes come up here. So this is the common thread. The pillars of the plan are about preventing homelessness, managing experiences of homelessness, and then accessing housing and services. And for each of these pillars, there's a set of two priorities and two goals. So under preventing homelessness, the first is about acting before crisis. So this means that we're actually trying to take action before someone experiences homelessness. Think of these two goals around, you know, these folks have not experienced homelessness yet. We want to actually prevent it from happening. So the first goal is in the future, everyone in Oxford can confidently access supports to maintain their housing and avoid experiences of homelessness when circumstances change. So this is maybe a life circumstance that happens, and they will want to be able to react to that without losing their home. The second is about upholding tenant rights. So in the future, everyone in Oxford has secure housing tenure to prevent forced and unfair evictions. Next, we're in the category of managing experiences of homelessness. Again, we have two goals. The first is about helping people grow. So this is a circumstance where we tried our best, we're at the point now where someone might have experienced homelessness, now what? Do we have the system and the services there to help people out? And we want to help people out in two key ways. So helping people grow. So in the future, people experiencing homelessness feel confident and valued and are well-supported to grow in the community. So this is where that notion of dignity really comes into play into this goal that you saw in those principles. And then the second is around providing barrier-free access. So in the future, people experiencing homelessness have barrier-free access to services, including temporary accommodation. So when we say barrier-free, think of that as I'm not having to jump through a million hoops and red tape and, you know, process and paperwork in order to access what I need to access when I'm in this moment of crisis. And then lastly, we have the category of accessing housing and services. So again, two goals here. The two we have are increasing access to housing across the continuum. So you're going to see these two are going to link nicely with what you have in your housing and homelessness plan, and we're going to create those connections so that your plan's nicely kind of cascade. Goal five is in the future, people can access permanent and stable housing in their communities. And then goal six is around supporting lasting housing stability. So in the future, people with a history of housing instability have the supports and resources they need to maintain their housing for the long term. So the key nuance here is that this goal six is about kind of being able to now live stably in housing, whereas, you know, in the goals one and two, maybe I haven't experienced homelessness yet. So that's the prevention angle. And then the last one here is about like, I now need to kind of find my new footing in housing again. So that's kind of the nuance of the different areas of the system that we tried to cover here with this strategy framework. So I'll stop now. I think I'm right at the half-hour mark. So we have quite a bit of time for group discussion. What we can do first, and depending on kind of the group, we can do questions first. So anything that you need from us in terms of clarification? Is there anything that you want us to go back to and explain a little bit more? And then after we pause for questions, we have a few questions for you. So they're going to be more about, you know, give us your reactions. Does this resonate? Does this reflect the needs in your community? Do you feel like anything's missing that maybe you're hearing that really should show up here? And then do we think this is achievable? You know, what do we need to do to actually achieve some of these goals? What do you think maybe we're up against, some of the barriers that we might face? And maybe if you want to share any actions or strategies that you say would really love to kind of add this into the plan and would love to see this show up as a key priority? So maybe we'll open it up for questions first, but I want to just plant this for you because this is what's coming next in terms of the discussion. And we'll just kind of, whoever in our group might answer, we can kind of do it that way.
So if council's okay, I'm going to suggest that since it is a workshop and since really they're running the show, as long as we're all kind of respectful of each other, I don't think we all need to go through me every time, and we'll let them kind of run it. But... So I'll turn it over to you guys.
Perfect. Maybe we'll just go in this order, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Petrie. I get all the inputs from the different service groups and that sort of thing. The problem I have is on the output side, specifically around, a lot of these things are not in our control or our wheelhouse. We're acting like we have, when I read this, if I was the public, I would say Oxford County's in control of everything, and we just need to clean up our system and it all works. The problem is the system's made up of many different partners of which we have no control of. One is the provincial government. And so if we say, yes, if we make this plan up here and if everybody follows it, it's going to work perfectly, that's great. But the problem is, is that they won't. And so I'm a little bit concerned that we're overstepping our jurisdiction as far as what we can do from municipality and optimize what we can do and identify those areas where we're not effective and what we actually do and what we can do. It's great if people want to come on board with that, but I don't even speculate of the number of groups and stuff that are in different communities that try to work towards this, that are probably going to tell Oxford County to go pound salt because they have a plan that they're doing. So when I see these goals, and I know we're at the point where we're actually, you know, we're at the high level here, the problem is, in the future, everyone in Oxford County has secure housing tenure to prevent forced and unfair evictions. It's not us. How does Oxford County affect that? I don't know. So when I'm trying to accept a plan, how do we be effective? And that's the problem I'm seeing on the ground, is that how can we be? And we're asking from our constituents is, how can we be effective at this? So it's good to have these goals, but at the same time, it's like, is that something that we can actually have an effect on? Because the last thing I want to do is adopt something and go out and tell my constituents, this is what we've adopted, and they go, how are you going to do it? I'm like, I have no clue.
Rebecca, do you want me to start, or it doesn't matter? You can start if you want.
Yeah, no, I think that's a really fair question. I think that's something that we have to, that we think about kind of anytime we're dealing with this level of complex problem, where it's totally inter-jurisdictional and it really actually kind of hinges on several levels of government, several, you know, even beyond government, you know, kind of, I guess, playing ball with us and actually kind of seeing that these are the goals and these are, I guess, the mission that we're all on together. So I think our job next in this plan is really to actually put forward the actions and strategies and tactics that we think are within the jurisdiction of the county. And then we might otherwise kind of make suggestions and say, you know, here are the actions that we can do, but we've actually, in our research, identified other gaps that we can't fill alone. And here is actually some of the steps that other governments or other groups at play, and, you know, sometimes even in a housing and homelessness plan, you might say, you know, we would love to advocate for the private sector to do X, Y, Z, and here's our role in helping kind of shape the actions of other groups. So I think definitely in the way that we're framing the actions and the steps, we need to very clearly identify, well, what's in our jurisdiction? And then what do we actually need others to do to make this possible? I think the one thing that we do have going for us is that because of the breadth of participation so far, we did have folks from across municipalities there who have bought into this framework and structure. So I think even just bringing folks along the journey in that way, usually we see the buy-in is a little bit more palatable. But of course, this plan is not going to be, you know, directing everyone, everyone in, you know, across the county on what to do. But it is clearly going to identify, you know, what we can do as a county and what's within our jurisdiction. So I think that's usually the approach that we take. I don't know, Rebecca, if you have more to add to that on the strategy for how that works.
Yeah, and maybe just to kind of say, because that is a very valid point, and we have been, we've been aware of that through the entire process. But I think, too, we're coming at it from the lens of someone needed to start looking at this a little bit closer. And with kind of the county being a large funder of many of these things in terms of all of the community partners, it did make some logical sense for us to maybe start that process. And then to Adrienne's point, there has been a lot of buy-in with this strategy, and that's why I keep kind of alluding to it being a community-based approach. And one of the actions that would likely come out of it is that we will need some type of steering committee. And I know there's a lot of committees, but this would be something that there will be actions in this strategy. And if we have a steering committee that's made up of those larger community partners, and that's really, they've been willing to do that, and that's actually been an ask, it would at least be a little bit more boots-on-the-ground work to get those actions completed. There will be, of course, some community partners or other services that maybe don't want to make changes, or maybe there's no suggested changes for those. And like Adrienne said, there's only so much as the county that we can do, but at least if we have that participation in that way, at least there's more than just us kind of working through those actions. So this is what we heard, but that could still be an action coming forward. And we are certainly looking at how to best do that. But I will say there has been a lot of community buy-in for this, for this strategy. If that helps.
Yeah, sure. We'll keep going down. Yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. I think everything in this report, we've seen before, heard it before, we know it. We kind of live it, in fact, as most of us sitting in these chairs. What I'm, I guess, disappointed so far is still not seeing any of those action items, right? Clear who does what, or at least identifying what people are doing as a group. I'm talking organizations, not people, I'm sorry. You know, who is feeding? Who is housing? Who is helping get ID? Just plain and simple, who is doing what? Recognizing that, then just simply looking at the gaps that are missing. There's a lot of overlap here in all of our communities. And I know everybody kind of, I say silos often in our task force, and it just, it drives me nuts sometimes because we protect ourselves without really looking at, you know, okay, they're doing this, they're doing it well. Okay, I'm going to stop doing this because I'm doing this well. And I think as the county, I expect us to be the ones saying, listen, to dictate, you know, to be the leader at that level of all the organizations. And I'm, I just, when I opened this, I was really disappointed that that isn't clear yet, or that direction's not even showing. It's not even one of the priorities or a goal yet of finding what we're doing and who's doing what. And I think that's really lacking here right now.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you named that. So I think the reason it's not showing up as an action in the strategy is because the project itself is going to be able to speak to that exact question. So we actually don't need to name it as an action, so in, because we're going to produce it as part of the output of this project. So where we started in kind of the understanding the current state in hosting that, the community survey that we ran, so we got over 100 responses to that one, and we were asking the exact questions you just named of, you know, what are you already providing? Where do you provide it? Who are your priority populations? And so the synthesis of all that work is going to show up in this report. And the reason we didn't present it now is that we actually wanted to get the community to tell us what is actually needed so that now we can compare, sorry, we can compare what's being provided against what they see as some of the gaps. So we might say there's some duplication here, but in fact, there's a huge demand for that activity, so maybe the duplication is okay. So we do have a lot of that information, which will show up in the broader report here, because I think that's a huge piece of the puzzle, to be able to not recommend services that are actually already being provided. I don't know if there's anything else. Yeah, or go back. Yeah, yeah, go for it.
And to add on to, I think the other piece we're missing here as a priority is we've got uphold tenant rights, but we also have to recognize we're not alone here, and we also have to encourage landlords to build more and to assist us in that. And that should be a clear priority as well. If it's ARU funding, or if it's, you know, big buildings, there should be, that is a priority. We need that. We can't do it as municipalities. We need the private sector to be involved.
Yeah, no, that's great. And that one is going to show up, I'm just going to flip us back to, yeah. So that one's going to show up in goal five, because actually what you just said, Counselor, was a big comment that we received, which is that, as I was mentioning earlier about, you know, all these kind of non-traditional housing arrangements that people are living in, we actually would love for them to live in the arrangements that you just described. And so how do we actually stimulate that? And that's where we want to make sure that we're going back to your housing and homelessness plan and either speaking to actions that you've already named in there and figuring out, well, how do we actually take that to the next step? Because we realize you have a lot of plans and strategies, and it can be overwhelming to have, you know, multiple plans that are all kind of saying the same thing but are actually not aligned well. So, yeah, point taken, and that's certainly going to show up in this goal five for sure, because we heard that loud and clear. Yeah. Go for it.
Thank you very much. My question might be preliminary, and if it is, feel free to identify that. Under the three pillars, do you, have you had a chance to look at, or will you have the opportunity to look at, what is the cost of addressing each of these things? Because what I'm curious is if we can get to a point where preventing homelessness might be more cost-effective than responding to homelessness. That might be, you know, the long game, but I'm curious if we'll be able to see through these three priorities, sorry, pillars, which, you know, what is the cost per person? What is the return on our investment per person that if we can, you know, keep people out of that cycle? So I'm just curious, are you there yet? Is that something that we'll see in the future? And what are you seeing?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I like that you named that also because that's a really key, I think, I guess, a compelling argument for why should we invest in this? So in terms of what does it cost generally, you know, let's say someone experiencing homelessness versus, you know, providing safe and stable housing, what we're doing so far is we're consulting other secondary research. There's quite a few studies out there that have done this equation, not Oxford-specific, but we are able to consult, you know, academic research that has, you know, really thoroughly kind of costed this out. And there's Canadian precedents that we can consult. I'm not sure if we have a plan to actually cost out, you know, every single option here for the sake of, you know, the goals that are actually going to be in our strategy. But certainly in our best practice review, we are looking at kind of overall, what is the research telling us? Because that is usually a compelling argument for, you know, why invest in prevention, for example? I don't know, Rebecca, if we go further than that, but...
Yeah, and maybe not specific to, like, what's the cost per person, this in layman's terms here, but maybe once we have the actual actions, it would be easier to kind of attach a financial component to that, because then at least we would know, these are the specific, like, items that we're going to actually address. So maybe some just have to do with efficiencies and communication. There's no financial component typically associated with that. But in terms of the actual support services, I mean, if supports need to be enhanced, then clearly there's a financial component to that. So I think that's a very good point. I think it would just come with the actions. I wouldn't say we do it per person, but I think it would certainly in each bucket. It would be easy to do that once we have the actions from this. If that answers your question.
It does answer my question, but I... It does answer my question, but I'm just curious then, there's obviously a component to this on if we spend X number of dollars, it reduces our costs in some responses. And if the province contributed where they, you know, in their bucket, it reduces. So I'm just curious if we'll get to see what some of that looks like, prevention versus reaction versus, yeah, I'm just curious if we'll see that kind of in some way, shape, or form in the final result.
Yeah, to be honest, it wasn't so much a component of this. We can certainly see how we can thread that in, but I think that's with anything in social services right now. There's always a missing gap, but it's always who's going to fund that missing gap? And the gap is always growing, because obviously, services continuously need to be enhanced with what we're seeing in the community as well. So we can, we'll take that back, and certainly if that's something that we can thread into this, we'll for sure take a look at that. Yeah.
Thank you for the presentation. I had a few questions, like, who defines unfair evictions and who determines that? So that would be maybe similar on the grounds of the questioning that councillor Petrie had done. Recently in the news, the big mayors are advocating to the province regarding, well, to investigate involuntary treatment. And the response was, well, we're not there yet because we don't have any spaces. So, I mean, me quite frankly, I mean, I think we can put together a great comprehensive plan on paper, but every single community has this problem. If it were solvable, it would be solved. We wouldn't be here today having this seminar on homelessness if someone had the magic bullet answer, right? And the reality is, there are no spaces. Years ago psychiatric hospitals were closed. Like, I don't know where they thought people were going to go. Like, they were literally just abandoned. And as our population increases, we're seeing more and more people moving out on the street, and it may be for various reasons. It could be affordability, it could be mental illness, and it could be the drugs. I mean, drugs are free-flowing on our streets, and nobody seems to care. There's no war on drugs, right? So now we have a police matter, we have all these different agencies, that, like, we have the police and we have multiple different agencies dealing with homeless, but how do we tie it all together? So like, during the holidays, I had a situation with a citizen, there was zero support. It was over Christmas holidays. Well, nobody's in the office, well, that's great, so you want to prevent homelessness, but there's nobody to talk to. Where do I send them to? And one time I thought, well, I'll just test the system out. It was another person looking, trying to move them from a hotel to permanent housing, and I called, and the response I got was, would you like a pair of socks? No, socks are not going to solve my problem, right? But this is, there's a big breakdown, because you have all these different agencies, and who's doing what, right? But also unfortunately, and I hate to say this, there's a lot of jobs in homelessness as well. It's a growing industry, and I'm really saddened that I have to say that. But there's a lot of people employed in the industry as well. I don't, quite frankly, like, I just, like, when I read through this, I think we all know, like, what the reasons are, why people are on the street, but I don't think that any of us are actually going to solve it. I think there's bigger issues at the provincial government and the federal government. And the one piece that I don't see is that advocacy or that messaging on the policies that need to change that are going to help us at this level, because we're at the bottom here, right? We're dealing with a problem that's created by other policies. Thank you.
Maybe I can answer a couple of those threads, and then, I don't know Rebecca if you want to kind of pick up, because I liked what you were just saying about the thread on advocacy, and I think this does connect to the first comment from councillor Petrie about, you know, all of this might not be in our jurisdiction. And we actually kind of toyed with the idea of having a pillar that was just about advocacy. And where we landed is that the pillars and priorities are actually completely directed at what we see as the ultimate outcomes and what we want to prioritize for the community. Same with the vision, are we going to be able to accomplish that vision on our own? No, but we do need to set a vision that is actually speaking to what we see as the ultimate outcome. And so then within each of these goals, there likely will be activities that require us to advocate. So that's, I think, where all of those advocacy gestures towards advocacy are going to show up, because we're going to say, you know, if we want to, for example, I'm looking at number one, if we want to act before crisis, there might be three things that we can do, but we might say, based on all of our, everything else we've seen and what exists today, there's four other things that other groups need to do. So we're going to still name those things, but we're going to frame them as we need to advocate for these four things, because we've looked at the whole system as a puzzle, and we've said, these seven things need to happen. We're going to take the three, and we actually need to advocate for these other four things, and maybe identify which groups might be best suited to do that, because it might be within their jurisdiction, or their power, or their capability. So I think that's kind of a critical piece to, I guess, the system approach here, because acknowledging, you know, what you're saying, there is no silver bullet. I think that's why the framework here is trying its best to be comprehensive, so that we're touching on the different facets of the system, maybe what are the different, you know, leverage points that need to be addressed? Every single action might not get implemented perfectly on day one, and some might require funding, and some might be short-term, so they can happen quickly, and some might be long-term. And that's kind of, I think, the notion of creating big social change, is that we're not going to be able to do everything on day one, and we're not going to be able to do everything alone. So I think that's kind of the spirit that the plan is going to take, because we do now hold a lot of information about what's going on in the community that maybe the provincial government doesn't know about, or maybe the federal government doesn't have that insight to what's happening in Tilsonburg, for example. But if we can actually kind of communicate that, that's maybe the first step into making that change. And then I think the second piece, just what you were mentioning councillor, about, you know, there's a lot of people doing things, and they might not all know what each other are doing. I think that was actually a big outcome of the process itself. So the reason for bringing together, you know, 45 people, the same 45 people twice, is that a lot of people walked away saying, oh, I just had a conversation with the person who actually works down the street from me, and I had no idea that they were working on XYZ. And so sometimes those kind of additional connections that are happening, it's actually through the process that the change is happening. So I think there's value to just even in the process itself, that maybe people in the community might have not had that connection before. So that's kind of my, I guess, you know, kudos to the county group for taking on a process like this, is that that is actually making a step as well. I'm not sure Rebecca if you want to add to that.
Yeah, maybe just to bring it to our community. So we know this issue is complex. It's not just Oxford. We're very much aware of that. But it has become very clear that our Oxford system can be enhanced, made more efficient, and potentially improved in some areas to at least make these acts, like the things that councillor Gilvezzi's saying, and everybody's doing a little bit of the puzzle here. So those things have come forward, and I will say, there are going to be a number of actions, and that's why it's just not here yet. So I think when you see that, all those actions will be more Oxford-centric. We do have other plans that do tie advocacy into these things, but in general advocacy is needed across the entire social services system. But I maybe just wanted to say that we're just not there yet, but there are going to be specific actions that deal directly with Oxford's system to make those challenges a little bit easier, if we can get everybody to kind of buy in in doing so. And I think that's where that steering committee is going to come from, because again, like we've said here, we can't do all of the change, but at least we can identify it with everybody kind of participating, and at least work through some of those things. And that's why again today, if there still are specific things that you'd like us to tie in moving forward that maybe are more focused towards stock, this is when we need to really hear them, or you need to share them, so we can really make sure those are incorporated going forward. So, yeah, I think just generally saying, we know it's a big issue, but there still are some local things that we certainly need to tackle to at least help with the system. Yeah.
My turn? I have a lot of thoughts. I'll go with two if I can, and then I'll go to the bottom of the list. First of all, I think I have a pretty high confidence that Oxford staff are going to be able to implement effectively whatever sort of policies council passes and funds. But that then begs the question, you know, what policies are we going to actually endorse as a council? So, but I think you've made it clear that we are going to see very specific sort of policy recommendations, actions, and a later point. Okay. So second thing then is, picking up on what councillor Petrie and councillor Gilvezzi have said, I think that the advocacy is going to be a key part of that. We know that a large part of the problems here are, you know, healthcare-related, whether it's mental health or addictions. But I think that our advocacy would be much more effective if it was, you know, every municipality goes to the province and says, we need you to do more, right? And, you know, there's 444 of them doing it every day, and, like, I mean, I don't know what their batting percentage is, but probably less than a percent, right? Like, it doesn't work. In my experience, I think if we can go to them and say, we have a comprehensive strategy for Oxford, and your slice of that pie is this one, our plan isn't going to work unless you do your part. I think that has a much higher chance of being successful, not only with our own MPP, but the relative ministers, whether it's, you know, solicitor general, or health, or whatever the case may be. So I'm really looking forward to, you know, seeing the whole plan and what we need to do specifically here that is in our jurisdiction, and also how that interacts with, you know, provincial government primarily, but also other community partners as well. And then the other one, I guess this is my third one actually now, but is to councillor Martin's question, you know, we have the three experiences, right, of preventing, managing, and accessing. And I think that's a really good point, like, where are we spending our dollars, and where is the most effective place to spend them? But I would think that there would be some measure of cost avoidance in there too, right? In that, you know, there would be the dollars spent on preventing, but in theory, effective dollars spent on preventing mean I'm now not spending on managing or accessing. And to some extent, a lesser extent, as you go through. So I think, I would hope there would be some, you know, I know it's a weird and nebulous problem, but I think, I hope there would be some attempt to sort of analyze that, right? Like, you can spend dollars here, here, and here, and they'll have different amounts of effectiveness, but dollars spent in prevention, there's a cost avoidance, right? If we were, you know, running like a business kind of thing, we would say, you know, if I changed the oil in the fleet, I don't have to do the engine replacements or whatever, right? And so I'm spending more money on changing the oil, but it's actually a cost avoidance. I think there's a component there. I'll, I have more thoughts, but I'll go to the end of the list now.
So the worden was just where I was actually thinking about when councillor Martin brought it up, was we do need to understand the cost of doing something versus the cost of not doing something. And I think, yes, the cost of doing something is preventative, is fairly high. The cost of not doing something is usually higher. And so that would always be my perspective, is always I'm at the prevention end every time. I have no interest in fixing a problem, I'd rather prevent it. So, having said that, the other part about this, and this is no reflection on SHS or Rebecca or anybody, is that quite frankly, the public and most of us as councillors would like you to give us a very simple answer that I can say yes to or no to, right? And simple answers are usually good for simple questions, but they're generally not very effective on very complex questions. With, you know, all of the different elements of homelessness, we're not going to get simple answers, nor are we going to get 30-second answers. And so the challenge for this strategy, and the challenge for council is, A, to be willing to say, I don't know what the hell you're talking about, most of the time, and be willing to learn what you're talking about. And the other is that we're here for the long run, well, council isn't, but people are, and that we need to be prepared to invest for the long term. And I do struggle, because when you brought up the three, prevention, managing, and assessing, immediately I went to, no, no, nothing to matter with managing, assessing, I really want to spend the money on prevention. And say, can I turn the tap off today? And then you sort of go, but what about all of those people that are already in the system? And that's a huge challenge, because nobody actually wants to spend money on, and I say this with the greatest respect, on the mess that we already have. And it's a social problem, it's not an individual problem. We all own this problem, whether we like it or not. Anyways, the closer we can come to relatively, I was going to say, single-syllable answers, the better for everybody, like, for decision-making, or at least willingness to make decisions. But I also think that if we don't kind of hold ourselves to the fact that this is incredibly complex, and there is no simple answer, no matter what you say, just building houses, as an example, isn't going to solve this problem at all. I mean, it might help, but it's probably not the most cost-effective way of doing it. I don't know, I actually really look forward to the next step. And I don't really have any advice, because quite frankly, I'm not smart enough to actually figure out, how do you, how do you take a complex issue with a whole lot of individual elements to it, whether it be, you know, addictions, or mental health, or abuse, or whatever, and be able to fold them into one kind of neat package? Because I don't think you can. And so the answer will be as complex as the question. And you may have to break it down into little tiny bits so that people like me can understand. No question there.
Even without an answer right now, I think it's super helpful in any case, just to kind of remind us how it's going to be received. So even if this is extremely thorough and well-thought-out and evidence-based, it still needs to land with people. So I love what you just shared. I think it's just good for us to all kind of keep in the back of our minds as we're building the report. So, thank, appreciate that. Yeah, we'll just, we'll go around again.
Yeah, so I disagree with councillor Mayberry on the fact that we just want, well, we always do, on a simple solution, simple answer. I think that's part of my problem with this, is I expect it to be way more complex. Because we all around the table dealing with this situation understand how complex it gets. The public doesn't. Most of the time they come up, they want that simple answer, simple solution. Like, uphold tenant rights. I could talk about four hours about the different sides of the cause and issues of all this stuff, and if we don't understand both sides of it, and all the complex issue that that is, how do we affect change on that? Upholding tenant rights is one side of an extreme issue, on really about providing adequate rental housing, and what that actually looks like. Right now, I would be on the, probably the different side of the argument, saying that the shift towards tenant rights is so strong that it's creating a backlash the other way. And so how do we, now we have a decrease in people wanting to become landlords, there's lots of those things, it's a very complex issue. But where do we find, where do we stand on that one? I don't know if I can support that being in there right now because of what I know. The other thing is, I think that this, from this point of view, as I get the unconscious bias, because we all go home to a house every night, we assume everybody else wants one, and we want housing. One of the problems that we face with our service organization stuff is that people don't want to access service. And how do we, we can't force people to do that, and yet they're still homeless, and they're still creating drains on society, and they're not in their best interest, acting in their best interest, and we don't have capacity to deal with that. And I guess that goes to councillor Gilvezzi's point, and the advocacy thing of being able to have the tools to be able to deal with this. We can have, we have shelter space right now, but we can't get people to use it, because they don't have, and we can't force them to use it. Everybody has personal, so the problem is, we can come up with this plan, we can come in, but we need to understand the complexity of the situation, and I don't want to, from a back-to-back turn, whitewash it and just say, here's the issues. I want to get in the nitty-gritty dirty of it, and say, this is the truth of the situation, and these are the investments that we can make. And I know that's coming, and maybe there is, you know, and what, Oxford County doesn't have enough, maybe, maybe these, maybe some, as we said, the service organizations are all there for the best reasons, but they're not being efficient, and it'd be more efficient if Oxford County just funded ourselves to do it. I want those recommendations to come out to say what's going to have effects, because people are dying, people are, family members are losing them, we have real concerns, people are, you know, they're not being able to take care, I need solutions that I can say, put money towards, that will get results, because that's what people are demanding. They don't like seeing people homelessness, and I'm sure Mr. Hall's crew doesn't like having to take the same people again and again for overdoses. And I want to hold the people accountable who can do something besides their, so I want to hold us accountable, and I want to hold the people who are accountable in other areas with the data to say it. The problem is, we know a lot of decisions, rent control came from Bruce Davis as a way to win votes with seniors. The problem was, if seniors needed, if there were certain seniors who needed help with their rent, the province should have helped pay their rent. It's created a system now that's where we're at. So we need real solutions, and real, and I don't care if it's So, we need real solutions, and real, and I don't care if it's telling us that we're doing something that we're not supposed to be doing, or not investing, but I want to be able to act. And that's, I guess that's where I'm coming from. I just brought forward, a council from Town of English, they sent something, they're willing to have investments in their community. I want to have something like that happen throughout, but have real results. So, wherever it's got to be, I just don't want it to be so simplistic that it looks good on a piece of paper, and not accurate, and not good at working. So I'll leave that there.
So, just for point of clarification, while I suggested the problem is completely, or is very complex, you might notice that Counselor Petrie, in our willingness to disagree, and one of us to be wrong, is that he just pointed out then, and he said, "Oh, he disagreed with me." And then he pointed out on four occasions, just in the last couple of minutes, how complex the situation was. So I just want to point out that maybe my assessment wasn't quite as far off as he might have thought. Anyways, I would, I would, both, or sorry, Counselor Petrie, Counselor Gervasi, and the warden, all mentioned about advocacy. And while I would love to advocate, well, I don't know that I'd love to advocate, but while I think there's value in advocating, the person to whom you advocate had better be listening. And they better be in a position, or have a desire, to actually fix a problem in Oxford County. And I'm not sure that, I, I mean, you won't understand this, but when you get to a certain age, you only have a limited number of days left. And I'm not sure I want to waste my days doing something that I don't think is ever going to happen, and therefore, I might just well do the work myself. And so, I would be less interested in what can we advocate for, and more interested in what can we actually do that provides leadership to this issue. And, yes, it is going to be expensive, and yes, some of the return on investment actually will go to other levels of government, i.e. Ministry of Health, Correctional Services, all that sort of thing. But still, it's our people, it's our community, and I think we should be investing in it as well and as efficiently and effectively as we can. Had nothing to do with you, it was simply a balance here with...
I just want to note, we're also taking detailed notes, so even if we don't respond, we're taking detailed notes so that we can include all these perspectives, whether competing or aligned, in the plan, we'll figure out how to reconcile afterwards. I don't know if we wanted, I saw a few hands, yeah. Go for it.
Just real quick, I think barriers, though it has been recognized in your previous pages, I think has to be a little more highlighted, because in all the communications and everything, when I speak to people that choose not to go into our shelter system, that are choosing to live by themselves, it's always a barrier of some sort, doesn't matter if it's a pet, couple, anti-religious, there's always something. And I think, we're just going to make sure that's clear. One size doesn't fit all. And again, you've touched on it, but let's just make sure it's a priority, if we really want them, everybody, to get out of homelessness, because, and encampments, of course, is another issue all in itself.
I got more. Couple things, two that are related. First of all, there was, one of the slides talked about, like, system navigation, and how do people actually, you know, Counselor Gervasi said, you know, somebody, how do we get through that? And I think, and I think probably stuff's going to come later on, specific action items. But, related to that, though, is Oxford County has a Safe and Well Oxford Plan, which is our legislated community safety and well-being plan. And I'm certainly not suggesting that Safe and Well Oxford takes this over by any means, okay? However, it's a lot of the same partners at that table, and a lot of the work that we do at Safe and Well Oxford is an attempt to, to improve the safety and well-being of our residents, which a lot of the time, you know, tips over into this area of homelessness and homelessness response. So, just, you know, encouraged thought about, is there synergies overlap, complementary work, whatever? I don't know what that might specifically look like, but it is a group that we have working already, we're mandated to do it anyway, you know, is there potentially some advantages there? I don't know what that answer is, and I'm not expecting to answer that today. Next one is around, should, should the advocacy component actually be like a foundational component of this? And again, I'm not expecting the answer today, but, but I, the more I learn about these issues, either, you know, on the street, as Counselor Archie only said, or as, on the Safe and Well Oxford Committee, almost every conversation kind of ends at a certain point of, and we don't do that, and we don't do that, and we don't do that. And I know when you talk to, you know, a person on the street experiencing homelessness, or in another agency, or a resident who says, "Why is this person in the park beside me?" It's so frustrating for them, when, you know, their mayor or their warden says, "That's not me," right? Because they don't know, they don't care, and to some extent, well, I mean, they should, but to some extent, you know, I get it. So I just wonder if it needs to be almost like a foundational component, again, sort of circling back to what I said before, in that, we, I think we should come up with this comprehensive plan, but there's going to be a big slice of that comprehensive plan that, if it's not there, you know, like, and I think it's sort of the deal where, even if only 20% of the plan is the provincial government, we're not going to be able to do our 80% without them doing their 20. It's going to be like, we're going to be able to do sort of 30%, 40% of ours, if they don't do their 20. But if they do their 20, you know, we might actually be able to really deliver on the whole plan. So I, again, just offering that as a suggestion, do we need, do we need to look at, you know, how important is the slice that the other people do? And does that, does getting them to do that need to be sort of foundational to this? Otherwise, we're just limiting ourselves tremendously. And then, the last one, I guess, would, is sort of a suggestion slash question, is, I think, when and if we get to the point where there's a whole bunch of action items for this? And I think this has been hinted at a few times by a few comments and questions people have had, do we need to almost have some kind of a summit of all of our local partners, and all of us, to sort of say, "Okay, whatever we've come up with here is imperfect, because it always will be, but do we all actually buy into this?" You know, and if, and if somebody's not going to buy in, I would rather know. That's not to say we're not going to do it, but I would rather know. But equally, I would like our other partners in the community to say, "Yeah, I buy into this," if they really say so, you know? And I would like to, you know, we can't expect, and we certainly can't dictate, that other partners are going to behave a certain way, but I'd like to know. I think we should go in with our eyes wide open, what community partners are like, "Yeah, we're in, let's do this. If county council does this, we're going to do our best to make it work." And if there's some partners who are like, "No, we don't agree with this, we're not going to do it," I would like to know. I think councils mature enough that we make decisions all the time, where we know, like, not everybody's going to be on board with this. But if it's the best option available to us, we should do it. But I think in this case, where there are so many other partners, I wonder if we need to do some kind of a summit, some kind of a version of this, but with, you know, Operation Sharing, and with United Way, and everybody sort of, you know, stereotypically, it would be like the Community Safety and Well-Being Plan Partners, and sort of say, "So, everyone, are we all on board here together or not?" I would hate for us to do it, and then have people come out afterwards and say, "I always said this wasn't going to work." If you're going to say that, tell us now.
Maybe I'll just, yeah, because I'm kind of, this is why we wanted to have this open conversation, because it might change kind of how we progress with the plan. So, I think knowing that, and kind of the discussion that we've had, I don't think it would be a case where we get all the actions together, and we come back to council for approval of that document. I think at this point, we're going to take this back, kind of group all the actions together, and maybe identify to that point, these actions fall under this community partner, these actions are county-driven, these actions are things that we need to advocate for the provincial and federal governments to do. And that might lead us to know, how much is the county's contribution in this, right? And we can attach financial component to that. And it might be possible to bring that forward to maybe a larger group, with everybody that's been identified as kind of contributing to those actions, so that there is that full buy-in. Because, I mean, SHS has done a very good job at kind of getting the buy-in from everybody, and it, like, this came from the community. This was not developed from us. This is kind of what the community was saying. But to that point, I think it maybe is important for that next step.
That specifically what I meant was, when there's action items, and when we're sort of saying, "So this is what we're going to do," I would like to sort of see everybody who's on that list say, "Yeah, we're going to do that," or "No, we're not," or "I would love to, but I can't because," or whatever. I would like sort of that collective, you know, if there's somebody in this action list who's going to have to contribute, I feel like we all kind of need to be in the room together. Not expecting everybody will agree, but we should know.
I think that's a great way to also circle back with that group again, and I think it makes for a robust process. And in our last session with them, they did start to generate what are those actions, so then to see it all come together, and then say, "Well, does this actually reflect what makes sense?" I think that's, it would round it out really nicely. I also just want to comment, the direction you were sending us, when you were talking about, you know, if these are the activities that we're going to take on, then they can only be unlocked if someone else does these other things. I think that's maybe a nice framing for then, when we start to kind of go through all the actions, to actually show which ones are dependent on each other. So, let's add that lens to kind of the way that we, maybe, the way that they're presented, and the way that they're described, is which are hinged on something else happening. So, that's super helpful.
Yeah, because I think, the thing is, there, the amount that any organization is going to be prepared to invest in this, and specifically county council, is going to be dependent, I think, on, well, how effective can that be? So I think if we look at it, and there's a chunk of the pie that's somebody else to do, again, let's pick on, I don't know, the provincial ministry of health, if they're not doing their chunk, then I think there's going to be, you know, to some extent, a reluctance amongst us council to say, "Well, how much money am I prepared to throw at this thing, if I have zero confidence that they're going to do their part?" Whereas if we feel like, well, actually, I think they might do that, then we might say, "Well, then, now there is actually more interest in, you know, transitional supportive housing, or something like that, if there are going to be more recovery beds," or, you know, for instance. So I think, you know, each organization's interest in allocating resources, whatever those resources are, is going to be affected by every other organizations. And I think, so again, to the summit, and to the advocacy, that the final list of sort of action items needs to be reflective of that, I think, whether it's getting buy-in from community partners, or advocacy with the province. Because again, if every piece isn't there, right, you know, the chain's only as strong as the weakest link, and all that kind of stuff, but I think we're literally talking about the chain here.
So, exactly what I'm thinking about is, you know, we have stuff happening now, and it's obviously woefully inadequate, because it's not making the effective change that we need, that was when we want to see. Part of this, I'm hoping, is that we have all this data coming in, and we reverse-engineer this to say, "Okay, what is effective to make change?" And then we go through and highlight, A, we have this capacity, we don't have this capacity, we need to change in this. Because, again, saying we have adequate ambulance service to do this is not something that we want to try to keep going. We want to see that, we want to see overabundance in ambulance sort of, I want to put paramedics out of a job, I'll say that live. Obviously, we'll love that one. No, I want to be able to do their job where they need to be doing it, and response times that we expect in society. So, we have all the, we have an Oxford-specific issue, a Woodstock-specific issue, we have a Zoro-specific issue. What is happening there? What's the response that people say need to be happening? Is it happening? Who's doing it? How can we do it? And what can't we do? Not, we have this situation right now, how do we reverse-engine to get to that goal of where we should be? That's what I want to see the final thing come out of this, so we can allocate funds to where that needs to be, where we can be effective at it. And I know that's an ever-changing goal, because things are changing, but how do we get there? Because, obviously, it's not working right now. And I want to be able to give, it comes back to the advocacy point, is, I don't want to task this whole thing, at the lens that it's an Oxford County issue, and not be able to give reason, the worst thing we can do is try to give staff a job they can't do. Because I agree with the warden that, if we give our staff a job they can do, they come back with it done. And so it's only fair for us to task them with items that they can, they can have an effect on. And, so, but, yeah, it's, it's all been said, and I'll leave it there, but it's just one of those things where, if we can't be effective at having an impact, then it's going to be hard to do stuff.
I want to go back to a question on the pillars itself. So I'm just looking at managing experiences of homelessness. The obvious one is those in homelessness, in the situation, but in that section, are we also considering our first responders, touching on that? Are we talking about neighbors, their experiences? Are we talking about the encampments themselves? I mean, they are a form of housing, if we like it or not, it is a form of housing. So, just want to make sure that those are also part of that consideration to specific Oxford, because that's, that's my whole hope with this whole plan. It's very centered on what we are dealing with, what we need here as a community of Oxford County, and each one of our communities are slightly different. But having that approach of, this is going to work, this is what's needed here, this is what's going to be needed there, and again, those action items is so, so important to, I hope we get out of this.
Yeah, and that's helpful framing, to kind of just make sure that we're actually addressing this from the different vantage points. I think we have a lot of what you just described. I'm not sure, from the ambulance perspective per se, but I think we can, we can dig up, maybe working with Rebecca and team on that piece too, but I think, taking away, just making sure that we're speaking from the different perspectives that might be impacted by the situation.
If I can just add to that, not only, you know, I'm talking first responders, not just ambulance, but, I mean, we can get you police data from the city here, I'm sure OPP can give you data on what type of calls they're going to, they're very clear, and that'll add to that costing of, if we don't do it, this is the expense.
Yeah, no, super helpful.
If I can, just make this simple. No, no, I know, I know the warden wants to get going, so I'll make this, so my understanding of the next step is that, in fact, we're going to see a whole lot of action items, maybe or maybe not delegated to particular partners. And when do we expect to see that? Next week?
Maybe I'll, maybe I'll let you answer when it's coming to this group, but...
Let us take this back, because this maybe put a little, I think this extended it a little bit, in a good way. We were intending to kind of make sure there was some buy-in, but this is maybe a bit of a bigger buy-in. I, at this point, do not think it will be in the next two months. I'm kind of expecting probably first quarter of the year, which really is probably what we were kind of targeting to begin with, for pulling it together.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think we've put ourselves in a, there's like, the pro and con of sharing just this with you today, right? So it's, we wanted to share it to you early enough that you can still influence what's going to go in there, so I think everything you've shared today has been super helpful in helping us frame how we're actually going to situate the actions. But then, of course, we, there's less information that you have, so then it feels like something's missing. But we really appreciate you weighing in at this point. I know there's less information, so it's harder to weigh in, but I think you've allowed us to now take your input to actually shape how this turns out. So, appreciate you weighing in at this, a little bit more ambiguous moment in the work.
So the warden hasn't said, "I had to shut up," so I'll just, I'll just say, quick comment. First of all, before he brings the hammer down, first of all, I appreciate this interim, what I would describe as an interim report, and I feel fairly confident in the direction forward, right? Again, I, my sense is that this is incredibly complex, and that, to the point where, while we sit here and say, "Well, nobody should be homeless," in fact, that's maybe our opinion, but other people have other opinions. And some of them are homeless. And so I think we want to be really respectful of that. But I look forward to the next steps, and I actually agree with the warden on this, and that's where he hasn't brought the hammer down probably, that we might want to have that bigger conversation with the broader community, and say, you know, "Okay, are we in, are we out? And what portion of this thing are going to pick up?" And while some might be saying that we need the province to do something, I would also encourage us to say, "And if they don't, what are we going to do?" And, you know, I'll leave it at that, because the warden knows where I'm going with that.
Did you have one last comment? Yeah.
Yeah, last thing, is just really budget implications. If there's something, again, my own fault, when I saw the report coming, I was really hopeful we had the answers, we wanted those action items, so that we can take them to the budget and say, "Okay, you know, we need X amount of dollars, this is where we're going." So I guess, if there is anything that comes out of that early, of course, we'd love to see it, so it can be considered as a council... love to see it, so it can be considered as a council and moving forward, and I know Rebecca will do that anyways, of the obvious stuff, but would love to see big picture.
And maybe I say one comment about the budget. As council may recall, we did do the new initiative last year for the homelessness response, which included kind of those transitional homes as well. There is capital dollar set aside, um, for any actions that might come out of this, so that there is some immediate things that we can take up right away. So I just want to at least say that, but of course, going forward, uh, into any future budget conversations, um, if anything comes out of this, it might be a bigger, a bigger conversation for sure. But just to make council aware. Yeah.
Anyone else? You guys are done?
Right on time.
Awesome. Well done. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think you can tell by the engagement here, like, there's tremendous level of interest in the work, so, very keen to see the next steps. Thank you. Counselor Petrie?
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor, Counselor Acheone, resolve that bylaw number 66742024B read a first and second time.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Counselor Petrie?
Thank you, warden, again through you. Move myself, seconded by Counselor Palmer, resolve bylaw number 66742024B given a third and final reading.
Is there any discussion? All is in favor? Opposed?